Okay, it is 6:42 and we are calling the Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting from March 25th, 2025 to order. It is, we are a little late, it is 6:42 PM. All right, we'll take a roll call. We have all present except for Counselor Jones and Counselor Parker. And Counselor Parker is, I believe, at TPCCI. Up next, Calendar and Communications. Counselor Merritt, you have anything to share?
Oh, no, not really.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
Uh, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to all the folks who put on the Mystic St. Patrick's Day Parade. I think it was the 20th year. I definitely can say that I've made a lot of those, of those 20 with my children over the years. So it was great to be a part of that parade with many of the councilors up here. And it's always something that I look forward to. It's, it really is a very fun event. So thank you to all the folks that made that happen. I also attended a Board of Education meeting last night. And I think that's all I have today. That's, yeah, that's it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to pass today.
Thank you. Counselor Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to say thank you to everyone who helped to make the Mystic Govers Parade happen. It was a wonderful event. It was great to see so many people out in the community. I have received lots of emails that I'm sure everybody else has received here. Some of them were in support of library funding for the, all three libraries, and then also some concerns about some rates for Santa Cops that I will address later.
Thank you. All right. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Nothing to report. However, I do want to give my thoughts and prayers to the Avery Rivera family for what they're going through. I can't imagine what they're going through. So just sorry for their loss.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. St. Patrick's Day Parade, as previously mentioned, thank you for all the wonderful organizers and volunteers who make that such a spectacular event. Regular emails that individuals have received, and Friday is the Mobile Food Pantry at St. John's Church from 1:00 to 3:00.
Thank you. Wind-up information. Your question? 12:30 to 1:30?
12:30 to 1:30.
My bad.
Thank you, Counselor Russ. I'm there from 1:00 to 3:00.
All right. As with other councilors, I attended the Irish Day Parade in Mystic, watched the Board of Ed in the RTM meeting, received emails regarding the budget, as well as a parking issue that happened in Mystic over, during the Irish Day Parade with Communications. Let's move on to Approval of Minutes. Counselor Gajewski, would you like to take that?
Yeah. Motion to approve, item 2025-2-94, March 11th, 2025 Minutes and March 18th, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes. Motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of March 11th, 2025, and the Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes of March 18th, 2025. So moved.
Okay. All right. Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Russ. Counselor Russ, what do you have for us?
Um, Tuesday, March 18th, Committee Member Susan, I'm sorry, Page 9. Um, yes, Page 9. Susan Dean-Schimbrot was not in attendance. She was mentioned in the motion to go into executive session, but she was not in attendance. So it states that she was present. I just wanted to make that correction. It's under, I'm sorry. Roll call, third paragraph, last, second to last line, middle.
Okay. All right. It also mentions that I was absent. That is because I recused myself. So it does mention that in there. Anything else? Counselor McBride?
I just had a question, and maybe Counselor Gajewski can help me. On page six, it says he abstained. And I'm just, I just quickly looked this, so I apologize. I didn't look at it earlier, but there was a time when I had abstained. I'm not sure if this was the motion that I abstained or whether...
I did not abstain. What page?
Uh, page six. Motion to adjourn.
Seven of the packet.
I'm sorry. Yeah, seven.
Oh, eight.
Eight of the packet, sorry.
Oh, jeez. No, Counselor Gajewski voted no on that. I remember that.
Okay. That was another motion. Okay. Thank you.
To adjourn, yes.
Okay.
I do recall that.
Okay. We adjourned. It's okay.
All right. Seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote on 2025-294, March 11th, 2025 Minutes and March 18th, 2025 Special Minutes. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. All right. That passes seven to zero to zero. All right, we're on to new business. Up first is 2025-84-1, the Community Peace Garden Project. This is in our packet, beginning on page 12. Mr. Birch, we have someone here this evening.
Yes, you are.
Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a little synopsis?
Certainly. My name's John Waller, and thank you very much for having me. I'm the past president of the Rotary Club of Mystic and the Rotary District 7980 Peace Committee Chair. And I'm here today to talk about the Community Peace Garden, which is a tribute to President and First Lady Carter, which will be honoring their legacy of peace, public service, and global health. I did have a presentation. I wasn't sure if it was going to be running, or is it just everything in the package for you folks?
It's in the packet, but you...
Yeah, we have it in the packet. We do have it in the packet.
So I'm just going to go through each, each one of the slides. It's a, it's a pretty brief presentation. And before I get started, I just want to say that I believe that there are some people on the council here who might remember when President Carter, actually Candidate Carter, gave his speech at Electric Boat in, I guess it was 1976. I was, I wouldn't say a young man. I was, I was eight years old at the time. And I somehow, or 12 years old, I wound up worming my way through the crowd and got to shake President Carter's hand at that time. And from that point forward, I've always been a big fan of his. So the project, what this is all about, that basically President and First Lady Carter, they dedicated their lives to peace-building, humanity, humanitarian, and community service, and public health. They embody Rotary's motto, which is service above self. And President Carter's service here at the subbase in Groton, Subbase New London, and we all know as Groton, he was living here for several years and probably the most famous person to reside in Groton for some period of time. And that his advocacy helped save the submarine base during the rounds of, of cutting. So inspired by the Groton, the tribute that the council made on his passing, we felt, as in the Mystic Rotary Club, we felt compelled to, to honor their legacy. And in addition to that, Mystic Rotarian Amy Pizanis, she served as the Executive Director, still does, for Vaccinate Your Family, which is a global public health organization that Mrs. Carter was the Executive Director, was the President of for many, many years. And she was a close, personal friend of both President and First Lady Carter. So that we have this connection in our club, in our community, and we felt that their years of dedicated service were something that we'd like to honor, and that's why we're here today. And we propose what we call a Peace Garden. One of the, this particular year of Rotary, we are having a focus on peace-building, peace-building in the world, in our communities, amongst ourselves, and within ourselves. So that this is going to be a lasting tribute to peace and public service. We're hoping to have a dedicated space for reflection, dialogue, and unity. And the features, first and foremost, I'd say that the design or the implementation is open to what will ever best fit the site that is approved, provided, or approved. That's why we're here, for, for support. But the center of it would be a peace pole, something that Rotary is very active throughout the world. We're actually at the foundation of the United Nations. We were one of several non-government organizations that were involved in the creation of the United Nations, and we have a seat at every single United Nations function. So peace is one of the seven areas of focus that Rotary International and individual clubs focus on. We're looking to be able to create reflection areas with benches, or engrave quotes, or some, something else that will enable people to, to learn about their legacy, about what they did, what they stood for. And that would be through QR codes that would go to sites either that we would create or the Carter Center would create and maintain. And we would be focusing on sustainable landscaping with plants that represent peace and well-being. Again, we're open to the, to the design, to meet a budget, to meet a location. First and foremost, we need to present this to you to get permission to, to do this on town property, so that if that's something that you decide upon, we can work together to decide what the actual design, what the elements would be at that point. And so why, why would this, why would we have this garden, and what would be the impact and the benefits to the community? First and foremost, I think that it would bring the community together, a space for reflection and connection. When it comes time to implement it, we would be doing this with volunteer labor. Hopefully, we would get a number of different organizations to, to work with us, to plant, to build, to whatever, and to maintain over time. We would be promoting peace, public health, and community service awareness, aligning with the Carter's legacy. This would be a timeless tribute honoring these figures who live by the principles of service, compassion, and leadership. And President Carter was, was a veteran, and he stood for peace, but he also believed in peace through strength. As the Commander in Chief, obviously, he needed to make some tough decisions, but he was always in favor of peace through strength. And so that, that is really the focus, is the peace, but also all the other aspects of his life and in First Lady Carter's life. And so, again, the reason I'm here is to request the support of the, of the council to approve us to, to have some type of monument on town property. Where that property would be and the, the nature of the, of the garden, of the memorial, would be something that we would work out over time. We are asking for you to endorse the project, so that the community would understand that we're moving forward with this particular project. Probably number two, right after approving, would be to help us to identify a suitable location that would be accessible and welcoming. When I first came up with this idea, and we were talking about it, I didn't even know anything about the Groton Sail Project. It's an incredible monument that's in process of being, being built at the Groton Public Library. So the, the location is something that I wouldn't hazard a guess. I would just say that we would be very happy to work with any relevant committee if it was approved to either beautification, Veterans Affairs, whichever, to make this a reality. And then, once we, if it were approved, to receive logistical support during the planning and implementation phases. And I go on to reiterate that we don't necessarily have anything planned out. There's nothing, a design that I could show you that is what we want to implement. We want this to be a collaborative effort, not necessarily with Mystic Rotary, but with the town and with potentially other organizations that might want to participate together with us. So then, what would be the next steps? The, the thing that we can say definitively is that Mystic Rotary Club, the Board of Directors has unanimously approved the, approved the, this project to move forward, to present it to the Town Council, and to commit to a certain amount of funds to make this happen. We have money in our budgets, whether it's this year or future years. We have participated in a number of different community projects like this, like the Stonington Row Boathouse, things of that community-based nature. So we would commit to some funds. There are a number of other clubs, not just in the local area, but throughout Southern Connecticut, who would also contribute to this. And we have commitment from the district leadership that we would be able to get a district matching grant. So a typical district matching grant would have any number of clubs kind of bring together about $7,500. And the district itself would be able to match $7,500. So a minimum that we would be able to, to put forward would be $15,000. If that is a, a number that is not enough, then we would go and reach out for community support, individual support. But if it's something that was above and beyond what we decide for the scope of the project, we have the funds, I wouldn't say budgeted, but approved by a number of clubs in, in the district to move forward. I would also say that we haven't necessarily gone down this road, but if we were to get the permission, approval from the Town Council, the next thing that we would do would be to reach out to the, the Carter Center. And we're fairly certain through our, our connections there that they would be open to providing some level of support, whether it's logistical support. I couldn't hazard a guess of whether financial support, but certainly having the Carter Center behind the project would encourage other organizations, other individuals to contribute if that was necessary. Our preference would be, is really that we're looking to collaborate with the town, with other organizations, work together to make the vision a reality. And we absolutely welcome discussions on the locations, the elements, and the community engagement. And the last thing that I would say is that while we would really like to have something in place as soon as possible to have a legacy to the President and First Lady, I think it's something that we certainly would want to have, be a worthy tribute to them. So rushing into it isn't necessarily the best thing for this project, and we are open to whatever it is the, the council would like us to, to move forward in. So I thank you very much for your time, for your attention, and I'll be very happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Counselor Russ?
Hi. Thank you so much for coming tonight, Mr. Waller, and thank you for bringing this project to the, the town. It really is an honor to be able to have this in our community, to honor the only president who was a submarine veteran and who lived right here in Groton. It's, it's truly an honor. He was a wonderful president, the first president I remember, and wonderful to look back at a president who served and, you know, his goals were service, sacrifice. And he was somebody that I looked up to very much. So, so I'm excited to have this here. That being said, I'm going to make a motion to refer this to the Veterans and War Memorial Committee, so that they can, I'm sorry. Should I stop and let...
Second?
Yep. Okay. All right. You have a second. By Bordelain?
Okay. So my, my goal in that is that they can help you with scope, location, planning, all of that, and then that can come back to us for final approval. So that is my goal, my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for bringing this beautiful idea forward. I don't remember the '76. I wasn't born, but I remember reading about it. But I definitely remember being in the same room at a speech that he had given at the naval base during, I don't know if it was called the Brack Commission. I don't remember what the name was, when they were doing the base closures. And at that time, I was in my early twenties, living in Navy housing myself, husband serving on one of the USS boats out there, 757s of sorts, and raised, you know, eventually raising two children. And I remember getting involved in finding my voice when asked, "This base could close?" And I was like, you know, not only was I a military family, but I was born and raised here. Both my husband was also raised here as well. And then we raised our children here, and thinking like, if this base was to go, what would happen to this town? And I got to do something. And, you know, sometimes it's not hard, because you don't know what you can do. And eventually, people found stuff for me to do. And I remember when the big motorcade was coming through with all these high-end officials coming to tour the base on many occasions, standing outside with political, not political signs, but signs that, you know, were saying, "Save our town, save our..." I, I remember that very vividly. And, and remember going on the base and going and hearing some of the talks and things, and trying to get involved to help protect what I saw was an asset from both sides of the fence, for being active-duty military family, as well as, you know, a longtime resident here. So this is a beautiful tribute, and as it was already stated, you know, that, you know, he, you know, lived here, one of the only presidents who served on subs. And again, I was remiss, and I know this council is probably sick of hearing it, but as a proud mother of two sons who are serving the United States Navy as well, one stationed here on the USS Virginia, and one who is at Maine Maritime Academy on a full ROTC ride, pursuing an officer for submarines as well. Eventually, he would commission. I think this just really shows our community, submarine force community here, naval community, with the naval base and many other things, and all of the Navy families that are here. A lot of people I know, when they say Groton, I say, "How did you get here?" And they're like, "Oh, my grandfather came here, was stationed here, met my grandmother." Like, everyone has a story. And I think this just ties into that, and I love the mission of the peace and all that. So I look forward to helping fundraise or volunteer where I can. And I don't think, whatever committee, let it be beautification or veterans or wherever, my one question, and I only have 27 seconds, but I also will take another turn later when I can, about, if you know at this point, and maybe you know, about how much space do you guys envision as what would be needed?
Uh, yeah. So it's a very good question, and, and thank you for sharing that. This area, let's basically, that's encompassed here within the, I don't know how you describe this area in, in front of the council. I think that that would be an appropriate-sized area. With a peace pole, if being a center point, whether a center or, or at the end, I think that that would be appropriate size. It could be smaller. I don't think larger would be necessary.
Right. And, and thank you for that, because when I was doing some research and looking, I was wondering on space, and some people were saying about a, you know, other peace, peace-type of gardens in memory of other people. I saw like a 300 to 400 square foot space to up to like 600 square feet space. So we're not talking about a lot of land necessarily. I just think this is amazing. So I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Waller, it's good to see you again. I'm appreciative that you brought this proposal to the council, and I was happy to refer it. I have a question about procedure for the town manager through the mayor. Determining a location, would that be decided by the Veterans and War Memorials Committee in coordination with the Rotary? Or how would you...
They, they could certainly make a recommendation. I would want to, you know, we'd offer some staff time to look at it also with myself, the Public Works Director. You know, if something of this size, then, once a recommendation is made, then we'd bring it to the council, you know, to see what your thoughts are.
Okay. And you don't see any major roadblocks in finding a space, do you?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Waller. I was appreciative of you bringing this forward, because having a president reside here in this town is something that we should celebrate, and we should celebrate how much peace he brought, not only to this country, but to the world as well. So I look forward to continuing this journey with you, and Madam Mayor, you're back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Counselor Parker's just arrived online.
All right. 7:05. Counselor Parker has arrived. All right. Well, um, Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one quick question, as far as timeframe. Do you want to try to get this done to celebrate the 50th anniversary of his election?
That's an excellent suggestion. I hadn't even considered it, and I can say, I hadn't said, we hadn't considered it, but that, that's the realistic timing. I don't think that it could be done in a few months' time. I know that, you know, there are bureaucratic hurdles that need to be overcome. So I think that putting this into the 2026 time period with the 50th anniversary of his election is a great suggestion.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing that.
Counselor Bordelain?
Um, my other question. It was stated that he lived in the city side. Is that correct, when he lived, resided here?
That I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I think so. It would be interesting to like, really look at like where the location, I mean, if it even still exists, like, just kind of really kind of encompassing his, his journey here. And possibly even reaching out some other suggestions with other peace gardens that I've seen and celebrations in different areas, some that I've been a part of and others not, that I've read about. There are maybe some people living still that served with him on, on, in command here that would be wanting to come out to the ceremony, perhaps at the groundbreaking, or donate, you know, or whatever. So that would be kind of interesting as another, just, again, not saying you have to. I'm just, in my brain, when I was reading through my packet online the other day, it was just kind of turning like, you know, in relation to his, his journey here and his wife's journey here. But, yeah, no, I'm definitely, definitely interested. Another outreach thing, something that I was extremely passionate about, putting forward as a suggestion that finally got moved, is, as I stated, my two boys both wanting to serve their country on, in the Navy. We didn't have an ROTC program here. One of my sons wanted to go to New London, because they had a program that, anyway, we got one here, and one of my sons got to go into it for one year. The gentleman that runs that program up at Fitch High School, that would be great networking and volunteering for those youth up there to get involved in something like this, to have an action project to be a part of. And I can't think of his name. Oh, Commander Hinkle is his name. And I can, if you reached me offline, I can send you his contact. It is online at Fitch High School, because he does teach a couple of classes up there as well, but he is the ROTC. And he coordinates a lot with the naval base. But I think it would be so cool to get those youth involved. I don't know, maybe on the groundbreaking day, they present colors or something. I don't know. Just thoughts. Anyway.
That's great.
Excited to see.
And, and I just have to say, that's the collaborative, collaborative nature of this project, that we want to maybe bring it forward, but not necessarily limit it in any way, and, and to get the great suggestions from, from you folks, from, from other members of the community, to make this the memorial that it can be.
Yeah. No, I'm excited. And then, is there any thought about any of the pavement around it, like being blocks where, is there thought yet, and again, I'm just thinking out loud, where people can purchase anything, or is that any, has any thought gone into that?
I would say that it's, it's something that we hadn't gotten to yet, but obviously, that's an excellent suggestion and, and quite typical of what, what's done for something similar to this.
Yeah. And, and again, it's sometimes folks that have served with this commander, maybe still around, family members or offsprings, that might be interested in celebrating their time here in Groton and serving under him or with him or beside him. So anyway, I, I think it's great. I can't say enough. I could, I'm excited to see where it goes, and I look forward to being part of it. And I'm also going to send an email to Mr. Hinkle, but I could also, you know, connect with you offline and think it would be great to get those youth out there and seeing. And also, our beautification committee might be another committee that we have on board here that might be helping maybe with the plantings or things like that. And my last thing from my conservation side is hoping that some of that peace garden has some things that help with erosion and different plants that will really help our environment in our area, which would be really cool as another kind of win. Because he was for health, public safety, and things like that, it would be good to put that back into the ground as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands. I'm just going to finish it up with, I think the Veterans and War Memorial Committee is a great committee to send it to. The chair is Mr. Streeter, who is also our community historian for the town. So he has much information, as well as our Sessour back there, who knows where Mr. Carter probably lived in our town, because she was making some motions about that. I'm very happy to have been able to, to be able to support this with Counselor Gajewski's referral, and, and that we did, as a council, send a proclamation to the, recognizing him and send it to the Carter Library. He has such a great connection to our town, and I think this is wonderful that you came up with this idea and brought it forward to us. And I think that committee, which also the Veterans War Memorial Committee, is serviced by members of all branches of our government. So it's, it's pretty diverse, and, but I also think because he was a veteran, it fits very well, and it would probably be the first thing that our council has sent to him. So I think that would be special as well. So thank you for putting the motion on the floor, Counselor Russ. I think this is a great idea. So with that being said, would you like to take a vote on sending the Community Peace Garden Project to the Veterans War and Memorial Committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Counselor Parker, I did not hear your vote.
As I didn't hear the whole presentation, I'm going to abstain right now. Thank you.
As I didn't hear the whole presentation, I'm going to abstain right now, thank you.
Okay. That passed seven to zero to one. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, up next is 2025-310, New Motor Vehicle Depreciation Schedule. Counsel McBride, would you, let me see, what page is this on? Page 20 of our packet. Counsel McBride, would you like to take that one?
Certainly. Item number 2025-310, New Motor Vehicle Depreciation Schedule. Make a motion to recommend a resolution adopting the new modified motor vehicle depreciation schedule for the 2024 grant list.
Second.
All right, move back, Gaia. Seconded by Boardland. All right, we have some handouts here from our assessor, and would you like to introduce yourselves and give us a little synopsis of what you're bringing forward here?
Sure. I'm the assistant director of finance. Tonight, I have with me Mary Gardner, our town assessor. Tonight, we're here to discuss the new bill that was signed recently regarding the modification for the motor vehicle depreciation schedule that we can choose to adopt.
Excuse me?
Counsel Parker?
Yes, could you move the microphone closer, please?
Sure. Is that better?
Thank you.
Is that better?
Counsel.
Is that better?
I didn't hear her say anything yet.
Hello?
That's better.
Okay.
Point of information, your question. I just don't know if Counsel Parker has this, should we put it on the screen perhaps, so she can see it?
I don't have it digital, I just received it.
So Mary Gardner has some information that she can discuss with you, and then, if there's any questions, and we can also send this handout that was brought tonight to Counselor Parker electronically afterwards.
Thank you.
Hello. Good to see you all again.
So in.
Nice to see you as well.
Thank you.
For coming.
So in your referral, it's just a quick explanation. Most motor vehicle grant lists this year dropped across the state on average about 13% because of the change in pricing. We went from using average clean retail to MSRP, and when you use MSRP, you typically apply it to a depreciation schedule. So the state legislature last year adopted the depreciation schedule, new cars at.
Your question?
My question is, for the people who are listening, and me, what's the difference between the average clean retail and MSRP?
Good question. With average clean retail, it's affected by market changes, so supply and demand affect average clean retail. With MSRP, it's just a straight MSRP, so it's not subject to market fluctuations.
So the MSRP would be the day you bought it?
It would be the MSRP of the year that the car was manufactured.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So towns in Connecticut, when COVID occurred, saw great increases in their motor vehicle grant lists, two years in a row, 25% on average, two years in a row, so compounding. MSRP takes that off the table completely, and so the state legislature changed the formula that we used last year. When we applied the depreciation to the MSRP, as I said, most towns saw a decrease in their grant list. The legislature this year decided to put forward this bill, and the governor signed it at the beginning of March, allowing towns to revise their depreciation schedule and bump up from whatever percent is applied by 5%. So instead of starting at 85%, we would start at 90% for new vehicles, and then it bottoms out at 20%. Our grant list dropped about $33 million using the new MSRP and depreciation schedule. If Groton opted to revise and start with a 90% schedule, we would add back, we think, about $28 million in value, assessed value. Once Groton adopts, if Groton chooses to adopt this depreciation change, it won't change again until you decide to change it again. So if you adopt 90% this year, it stays in place until you choose to change back to Does anyone have any questions?
That's all you got? All right. Counsel Pacino.
From 90% to 20%, you're doing that every year. It only takes 15 years. And 85 to 15% only takes 15 years. Am I correct?
That's true. It's not a 20-year schedule yet.
Why the reference to 20 years and older?
Because the statutes also say if your car is 20 years or older, and you have an antique plate, early American plate, or you come into your assessor's office and fill out an affidavit saying my car is 20 years or older, we have to drop the value by statute down to $500. That piece doesn't change.
Okay, so we'd be taxed.
Those are like exceptions to the rule.
Okay. Well, you kind of combined it with this, that's why I was, I didn't understand.
Yeah.
Let's see, what else was there? So what did we collect last year? I mean, is this gonna be retroactive to October, last October?
Yes, so what the state legislature did was they allowed towns to open up their grant list, we've already certified the grant list, we'll be opening it back up again, revising the numbers, recertifying it, and notifying this OPM that we've recertified. So it's effective for the July 2025 tax bill, which, we don't send assessment notices out for the motor vehicles, so, you know, people's taxes come in July, that's what they know, is what has come.
So this isn't something we have to do, it's just a, an option that the Senate Bill 7067 has given us?
Correct.
All right, I'll wait for another turn if I think of anything else, but I don't think I'm in favor of this.
Counsel McBride?
Just to ask some questions or clarify, the reason, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the reason this came forth was because a lot of the municipalities had a significant decrease in the expectation of motor vehicle revenue from the initial, what was going to be sending out, the bills that were going to be sending out?
That would be my guess. Typically, the Assessors Association is pretty involved in these discussions, but this bill surprised us, so we can only assume it came from the municipalities.
Yeah, and that's my understanding as well, because a lot of municipalities took a big hit on projecting out their revenue for the fiscal 2026 budget, which we're in now. So I'm not sure what the town's expectation was for that decrease, but what this allows is for that significant increase of lost revenue in the 26 budget, this allows Groton to pick up, which I calculated at about $69,000, back into what it wouldn't have had before. If I take the 28 million that we're adding back in, multiplied by the mill rate, this will have a $69,000 positive impact on revenues coming into the 26 budget that would not have previously.
About $700,000 in revenue?
Oh, 699, yes, I missed the digit, yeah. So it's 699.
We round, we round.
So I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted to make that point, that it's, the initial projection that Groton must have had was significantly lower, along with other municipalities, and this gives Groton, as well as other municipalities, the ability to make some of that headway back that would have been a loss in their projected for the 26 budget. So I'm in support of this, because I think the steep reduction to Groton's budget, I'm forecasting, as well as other municipalities, was very significant, and I think this makes things fair and balanced without cutting the town's finances so severely. Thank you.
Ms. Burh?
I was just gonna point out that it's, if we don't do this, then it'll just be captured in property real taxes, so it's, which way do you want to capture them?
Right, there's three grant lists, so there's real estate, business, personal property, and motor vehicle, and if it affects the mill rate, it affects all the taxes as well.
Because, you know, we have a piece we have to pay with taxes, this is one of the components, so it's just where do you want it to be taxed from?
So what you're saying is basically, from, I just circled it on here, just to clarify, the mill rate would just go higher to capture it if it was, if we didn't do this, is that what you're saying?
No, it will have no impact either way, because once we set our budget, we have all of revenues, including our fund valuties, you have a gap, that's property taxes, that's all three of these categories. So if you reduce one, you're just increasing the others, or you're just gonna, yeah, you're gonna pass it out.
So, yeah, what?
So it would have to, yeah, it would have to, yeah, it would increase the mill rate then, yeah, you're correct. I had to think it through for a second.
I think Dee's smiling, she wants to say something.
I, I'm showing that it would show a decrease in the mill rate, slightly, by like .6 mils.
If what?
If we did move forward with the new motor vehicle depreciation schedule.
But if we didn't, it would be higher, is that, I mean, at least on this spreadsheet, it looks higher.
All pieces the same as what we were proposing in our, you know, in the proposed budget, if we add the $28 million estimated to the motor vehicle, it would decrease the mill rate by .6 mils and give us like 700,000 extra.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Boardland.
Could you just clarify again the 20-year-old, what you said, could you just repeat that for me, just for my notes?
If you have a car that's 20 years old, you can either have an antique or early American plate on it, you can.
You can, yeah.
You go to DMV, or if you choose to not have the early American registration, the statutes allow you to come to the office and fill out an affidavit and say the car's never been modified, and it gets treated as though it had an early American plate on it. And those assessments are always $500. So if you have a $200,000 Mustang, and it's registered with an early American plate, or we have the affidavit, your assessment is $500.
So what if your assessment, so you gotta look and see if it's worth it, depending on how old the vehicle, I guess you're saying, okay.
It's almost always worth it.
All right. That's good to know, all right. Thank you for, it was a fun fact, right? It's something new you learned, so, thank you for that. So which, I just want to double clarify again, which one of these would be the, so the decrease is if we, we go with the 2024?
If the new depreciation schedule was, is implemented, if we recertify the grant list with the new depreciation schedule, the estimated mill rate as of right now would decrease slightly, and we'd have 700,000 extra for motor vehicle taxes collected.
So I understand that we want to level things out, but I also said, you know, a lot of people spoke about people having financial hardships and things, and so every little penny for some people to make these is very vital from that aspect. Some people don't own homes, so this would be the only chance that they would show a decrease, you know, they might not own a house, so they're not gonna pay if there was an increase for property tax or something there, you know, the bill rates on that. So I'm just trying to see, I'm torn on, like, what is your recommendation from the financial side? What do you guys see as like the best avenue to go to?
Who wants to answer that? To me, the grant list dropped, the motor vehicle grant list dropped by about 11%. And you're bringing it up almost to that, but not quite. So I, not every car assessment dropped, because when we move from average clean retail to MSRP, some of the values changed and went up, so it's never a 100% everybody went down at the same time. But if the overall grant list dropped, or the motor vehicle grant list dropped 11%, and this doesn't get us up to that full amount, you can kind of assume most people are still gonna experience a drop. It's not 100%. You know, we're not bringing it back up to what it was, and the mill rate compensates for that. I don't know if that was clear.
And I know there's some other municipalities who may have chose not to move forward with this, but they may have also been in a revale year where they were not experiencing a big drop in their motor vehicles. So from what I've seen, there's been quite a few other municipalities that have implemented it.
Yeah, the assessors, we have a message board, and it looks to be about 75-25 split, about 75% of the towns are adopting this, about 25 that have weighed in or not.
And if we don't do it this year, then when is the next option?
The statute doesn't limit any options, so I think it's always on the table.
So it's always on the table. I guess my question is, do we have to do it by that full percent, or could it be a percent that we chose?
It's that full percent.
Has to be the full percent.
Yes.
So my question is, I guess, speaking for folks who maybe don't have as much money and, you know, don't, are trying to get by, everyone keeps saying about it being a tough year, and people are food insecurity and things, I mean, is this the year that we want to do it, or should we look at this and forecast and project to do it the following year? There's nothing really precluding, like, preventing us from doing it at a later date, we can do it at any year, you said, right?
From what I understand with the statutes, that's how I interpret them.
Right, so I don't know that, is this the right year or not? I'm kind of torn, right? Like, I know many families who own a car, and that's the one thing they own, they rent, and they're struggling to keep that running and to afford food, so to someone like me who could afford this increase and probably wouldn't really notice it, others are gonna get that check, and it's gonna be, you know, ugh, like, you know what I mean, that little extra money does make a big difference for some folks. So I'm a little bit torn. I am, I don't know, if I need to speak again, I'll take my next turn, but I do think that we should look at this, but I, I'm a little torn. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. So, thank you guys for coming. So the quick, the question is, it's gonna affect '24 that we're in now, is that gonna change the price if we affect, make it effective now?
Yes.
Is there gonna be a balance for people to pay?
Oh, it, so it's for the July 2025 tax bill, which is the 2024 grant list.
Yes, okay. And thank you for the cheat sheet, but, so, some of our assessments were going down. It looks like most of them, some of them are going back up, right? Am I correct? Because looking at line number three, which is me, it looks like, instead of my assessment going down, it's gonna go up.
You have this worksheet in front of you?
I do.
Okay. The first box that has the border around it was last year's assessment, so the next box is the grant list that we signed, and then the box all the way to the right is with the new depreciation schedule. So your tax would go up $3 from last year.
Compared to what, from last year?
Yes.
Considering from 2023?
Correct.
The one in the middle.
Correct.
But if we kept it to the one in the middle?
You'd go down a little bit.
It would have been, will go down a little bit.
Yeah.
Because it looks like everybody goes down a little bit if we kept it the same. So we wouldn't be increasing, and you said that if we did it this way, we could decrease our mill rate by .6?
That is my tentative calculation.
From collection of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, that was the tentative calculation that I came up with.
And this would affect the newer cars more?
I don't have an answer for that. You know, it depends on what the average clean retail was compared to the MSRP for any year vehicle.
I don't know if I'm comfortable with this. I see where it's going, but I'm not sure. Thank you.
Let me, let me just clarify something, I want to get this clear. Mr. Burh had answered it earlier. If our town needs so much in, to cover its budget, the expenditures, right? our town needs so much in, to cover its budget, the expenditures, right? So no matter what we do here, whether we move it up or we leave it the same, the money we need to cover our expenditures will just be pushed off to something else. So it'll probably be on real estate taxes. Is that correct?
And personal property business taxes.
Personal property taxes.
If, whether you reduce it or lower it, it's spread out among everybody. So whether the mill rate is higher or lower, or the grand list is higher or lower, every, every change to the mill rate spreads it to everyone.
So we will set the mill rate, and it will affect when we, when we set the mill rate, depending on what our choices are made here, correct?
Yes.
Because we need to cover the total of the amount we have to cover in expenditures.
Correct. Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand it. So you said about 700,000 revenue? If you use 4.7 mils, wouldn't that be about a .15 of a mil?
What, for a decrease you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. If you didn't have to collect 700,000, I just want to make sure. I seem to be missing something. If you collect 700,000 extra there, you know, with the mill being slightly under 4.7 million, wouldn't that be about .15?
Yes, but I, the way I'm factoring it into the spreadsheet, it's, you know, it's got our fund balance, potential fund balance applied and all of those other pieces to it. So I have it going from 24.98 mils to 24.83 mils, which is a .6% decrease. But a 1.5 mil decrease.
.15, yeah.
Sorry, .15, yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying, yeah, .15 mil.
Councilor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, I'm gonna ask you to walk me, first I'll thank you, but I'm gonna ask you to walk me through this. First of all, not coming from this area, moving here as a military family. When my husband got out of the Navy, I can tell you the first time I got a vehicle tax, it was the scariest thing I've ever received in the mail. A lot of that is because you have one month to pay it, which is horrific. So that is in the back of my mind when I look at this. That being said, I would love to look at this chart and kind of walk through it because the people in the audience don't have this. So for me, you have my daughter's 2017 VW. The 2023 assessment is $9,630, and the taxes were $222.
Let me just add one clarification. It's only the town mill rate. So whatever district you're in, we haven't, so if you think of what your tax bill was last July, it might not be that number, just for everyone's clear.
Okay, so let's walk through that. You get taxed not only on your town tax, but also on your fire district tax. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Does all of that money stay here in the town?
No.
How much of it goes to the state?
Oh, I'm sorry. All of it stays in the town, but none of it comes to the town. Some of it goes to the fire districts. So all of that stays in the town.
Okay. That was my, okay. So my 2024 assessment went from $9,630 to $9,440. And the taxes would, so if we leave it as is, taxes would go from $222 to $236. So they're still going up. Then if you jump to the proposed new one, it goes from $9,630 of an assessment to $10,383 for an assessment, and it jumps up to $258. So we're looking at $35. Isn't that much, but it's still more. I feel like we're playing like, we're gonna get the money from somewhere. I hate, I hate vehicle taxes. Hate them. I'm just gonna go on the record here. Because you have one month to pay them. That is it. You get one month. You find out what it is, suddenly you have to pay it. And I know people can budget over the year, but most people don't look at it during the year, and they don't think about it. I can say we have four vehicles and an RV, and we just looked at it today. And that's a lot of money that we're putting out in one month. So I know, well, okay, let me back up. What portion of the town income is paid by motor vehicle taxes?
I do not have that information.
Just motor vehicle?
Just motor vehicle.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
How soon does this need to be determined? Like, do we have to vote on this at the next mayor and council meeting?
You do, because if we reopen the grand list, I have to recertify it by April 14th or 15th. And I need time to run the changes.
So I'm torn. I hate motor vehicle taxes, but I like the fact that it's spread out over everybody. So I'm, I'm very torn here. I don't have a good answer for this. And I don't know that there is a good answer for this. So at this point, I'm just gonna yield my time, but that's where I'm at.
Councilor Pacino?
I have a couple of more questions now. Looking at this, at this list, I noticed that there is a 2014, 2014, and 2011, and a 2017. Three, four of those oldest cars on this nine-vehicle list have gone up in taxes, whereas the other ones have all gone down in taxes. Is everybody on board with that? Anybody see that?
Yeah.
With that said, I would imagine that most people who have older cars have older cars for a reason, because it's cost-effective, because maybe they can't afford a new car.
Um, I wouldn't go into people's thought processes that are on this council.
In any case, it seems to me that we might be targeting unintentionally a, a group of people who don't need to be targeted. Is that fair to say? So with that said, just want to get that out there, because that just, just doesn't look, just doesn't seem to add up to me. So the tax bills for 2024 have not gone out yet.
No.
Can this, if this has to be done, can this be, can this take effect for the October 2025 tax bill, which would come out next, next year?
The town council has the option. I mean, you don't have to do anything this year. You can revisit it and change it next year if you like.
Okay. I am happy with revisiting. Yeah, it just, it just, it kind of stands out to me that those three of the four oldest vehicles have gone up in taxes, and that just, that's striking. I owe you of my kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Gajaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, through the mayor, question to the assessor. What, what, can you, I understand the process for assessing real estate. Can you explain to me the process for assessing a motor vehicle?
It's pretty straightforward now. We have a subscription to Price Digest where we can find the MSRP. And we build that into the account, and it's multiplied by a depreciation factor. That depreciated value is multiplied by the 70% assessment factor. And then that for taxes multiplied by the mill rate to generate a tax bill.
And is, through the mayor, to the assessor, is this reassessed every single year?
Certainly is.
Okay. And so then, follow-up question. Can you explain to me, is it, the reassessed value is going up in the sheet you gave us because we're going from an 85% to a 90%? We're increasing it by 5%?
If you're, if you're looking at the middle box, in the box to the right, yes. That's the difference between those two depreciated values. The 2023 grand list was valued using average clean retail, which is a, a different basis of valuation completely. It just means a market value.
And you, to the mayor, you need an answer by April, like now, kind of, for this fiscal year?
I would need an answer maybe at your next meeting, so I have time to open the grand list, reassign these values, and then rebalance it, and then report it to the state.
Okay. Um, just for informational purposes, I'll use my own time. We could vote this out of committee and then revisit this at our next town council meeting next week. So if you voted yes, you could move it out of committee, and then we wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to make a final decision until the council. That's where I'm personally headed.
That's correct.
So I would vote yes, but at the next, and then have further discussion at the following meeting to reaffirm it. So I'm a yes for tonight, because I think it's, could give us a little bit more time. And then if we wanted to do it this year, we could decide as a council to do it next week. If we didn't, we can always just postpone it at the regular council meeting. So, I mean, yes for tonight, but I hear my council's concerns, so I'm a maybe for next week if it passes out of here tonight.
Councilor Borderline?
I just wanted to think, uh, one of my fellow councilors, Councilor Pacino, for his observation on the numbers with the years difference. And it brings me back to my point. I know that my children drive older vehicles. Some people drive older vehicles, even who have a lot of money because they're just, they love to save money and things. I have a 1998 truck that we just kind of got from my father-in-law that we can't use, and he can't drive anymore, and it runs great. But I definitely am gonna be coming in to see about that 20-year plan there on that truck from 1998. But with that being said, you know, we don't want to assume that just because someone has it, they can afford necessarily. But looking at the lower-cost vehicle, people who are on fixed incomes perhaps, not seeing anybody on this calendar is on a fixed income. But I know, for example, like my mom, she drives an older car. She's in her 75. She's like, I'm not gonna buy another car in my lifetime. This thing should last me another 15, 20 years. Her car's getting older. It's okay. She doesn't work anymore. So that makes sense for her. This little bit of money for some people who are on fixed incomes is a little bit forecasting. You know, I just, I don't like the algorithm I see here. I think for me, I'm a no based on that. I could change my mind at the next, down the road, but for now, I think we can revisit this next year. I do have concerns, and I do agree with my other counselor, Councilor Rusk, that, you know, I too had that military clause for a while from our, uh, our boat, and it was so nice. And then when I went along with the Navy, it had to pay. I was like, ooh. And still, it gets me every year, right? The three cars come in, and I'm like, yikes, there's a thousand dollars almost, you know, it, it comes in. I'm not saying we shouldn't change it perhaps, but is this the right year with all the other change going on and all the other financial expectations and increases everywhere across the board? Is this the time to put it on the backs? Can we ride it one more year and maybe have a more in-depth conversation down the road, building for next year's, the following year's grand list? And, uh, by then, I think folks will have a chance to dissect justice in our community. So that would be the reason for me to vote no, not saying I wouldn't want to revisit this next year. I'm just not sure I can support this type of 11, I mean, 11% for some, eh, it's nothing, right? They won't even notice it in their account. But for some, others, that, that hits, that hits. And I have to think about those people, too. So when saying it's spread out everywhere else, for the people who have to pay that in July that are on fixed incomes, that hits them that day. And so I, I don't think I could support this today. But I do appreciate you guys bringing this great grid with observations. And I learned something new about the 20-year-old thing. I'm bringing my paperwork in for my 20-year-old truck with my father-in-law and getting my discount. So I thank you for that, and I will look at this again hopefully next year. You know, it's up to the council what they want to do. Thank you.
Councilor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you just explain what Councilor Pacino addressed? Without saying names, I'm just gonna say like mine and my daughter's VW went from $9,630 in 2023 assessment down to $9,440. But then there's one on here that's a $25,000 one that went down to 14, almost 15,000. Can you explain the difference, why that's such a significant change?
I cannot. I didn't look at the 2023 basis, but I know it was average clean retail, unless it's a math error, which I'm not sure, but I don't think it is. So I'm not sure. I mean, when you change from average clean retail, which is based on market, the market, supply and demand, and then you go straight to MSRP, which is based on the VIN number and the ad, you know, air conditioning, whatever comes on the car. I don't know why there's a big difference on that vehicle, but, um, I'll look at it. But there, there are gonna be changes between average clean retail and MSRP, because average clean retail did change every year. It fluctuates with the market. MSRP is a static number that will never change. Only the mill rate and the depreciation schedule will change those taxes.
So we should appreciate, or should assume in the future that it will just go down gradually from here on out?
Yes, because the MSRP will not change. So the only thing that will change will be the depreciation factor applied, until it gets down to 15 years old, and then it doesn't go below 15%.
Okay, I'm gonna clarify what I stated. And not that you said it, said it wrong, I just want to clarify what I questioned. Your assessed value should just depreciate slowly, but your tax rate, if we leave it the same, will go down about 5%, but then it's also based on the mill rate.
It's, it's the assessment that is the MSRP times the depreciation. That's the piece. It's the MSRP that stays the same.
Okay.
Okay. And as the mill rate fluctuates, you know, you could have a car tax one year higher than it was the year before, even though your depreciation might have dropped.
Okay. So I'm okay with Councilor Gajaski's approach of moving this forward, but I'm going to highly encourage our constituents to give us a call or send us an email or come out and let us know how you feel about this, because I know how I feel about it, but I would love to get everybody's feel about this. Thank you.
What information?
Your question?
I just want to make a wording as a question. Just one, uh, my understanding, my question is, my understanding is a brand-new car that's purchased, isn't the reason we're seeing discrepancy is a brand-new car that's purchased, the very first year depreciates by so much once you drive it off the lot?
Right, so.
Is that why we're seeing that with that particular one? Because I just bought a new car, and I know they say after that year, it's not what it was the year prior that you paid for, almost thousands and thousands of dollars less. Is that why that first year, there's that huge drop?
That could be part of it. I mean, that, that could be. The Assessors Association, when we worked with the state to come up with the concept of the MSRP, there were legislators who wanted it to start at 80%, and the compromise that they reached was 85. We suggested 90%, you know, for the first year, the depreciation table starting at 90%. But you do normally see a big drop in value the first year. You, you know, you drive it off the lot, that's the same. So, sure.
Okay, thank you for answering that question, because that helped me to understand it. Because that's why some people like to buy a car that's a couple of years old to, to buy it, where that in-between phase, where that huge thousands of dollars drop off. So thank you for that.
I honestly don't feel, I'm gonna take my turn. I honestly don't feel one way or another which, which way we should really go. I would give this a chance and say yes right now to have the discussion continue. My thought is whether we change it now or leave it, either way, it's gonna affect what the mill rate is. It, it just does. So we can either change it and do some things here and have it assist a little bit. And there are people that just, they don't, they rent, and that's their taxes that they pay to the town is through car taxes, so that is. And that's, you know, so I'm, I don't really, one way or another. I'm going with the will of council on this one, but I would probably vote yes just so we can at least bring this to the council and continue discussion, maybe if there is any other, something that comes forward that people have learned something different, or our community comes out and says, you know, how they feel, as another counselor has requested. So with that, your question?
I mean, you don't have to put our cars up there necessarily, but could I mean, you don't have to put our cars up there necessarily, but could someone use a blanket example? I mean, my question is, could you post this online so people can see this and access to understand, like to your guys' point? So people can, uh, comment on it, maybe put it up on our social media page, Facebook or something, saying that there's a chance the council's going to vote on this, you know? You know, I, I just think it would be a way of, so people could find it.
The only, the only issue is how each and every vehicle is different. It's hard to, you know, you can give a general explanation, but it's really unpredictable to the individual.
Or just something about that this is going on. Because how else are people going to know? Not everybody watches this meeting.
I think, um, well, there was an article in the newspaper about it. They wrote it up very well. Uh, Counsel Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, um, Counsel Bordelain is right. We should have a sample of something and not everybody can get access to the newspaper by two cents. Number two, so currently we use the regular standard issue, but we have to start at 90%? Do we have to start at 90%?
If you choose to change the depreciation schedule, right now, the statute says it's 85% and that's where the grand list is. So if you chose to change anything, you could only change it beginning to 90%.
So we're going to go higher and then it goes down the next year to 85, to back to what it was originally, then goes back down again in five, another year, two years from now, it goes down to 80?
Correct.
Is that correct? So, but we're at 85 right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McBride.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm actually not a fan of the individual public putting something out there for every single motor vehicle. And the reason being is this information hasn't been sent out anywhere. Nobody knows about what their vehicle's going to be taxed at. This council, I think, needs to make a decision and I think, you know, the more information on this process, which is they developed a new process, they sent out a new depreciation method. Whomever it was realized the depreciation method had errors in it. The legislator corrected the errors and now this is in front of us to make a correction. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of every single, because I think if you do that, you're starting to single out making your own decisions based upon a couple hundred dollars. And I think it's a bigger picture that the town was losing, you know, over $700,000, $800,000, $900,000 because of this depreciation method, which was, which had flaws. And now the governor or whoever has put forth a measure to say, we can fix these flaws by correcting the methodology of how it's calculated. And that's why I'm in favor of this because this information hasn't gone out. The bills haven't been sent out to the public, the majority of them, I mean, based upon the sampling. But I think this is bad sampling because even if there's three or four that went up, whatever it may be. Overall, if we're, if we're, if the town is losing $800,000, $900,000 in taxes and now gaining back $700,000, the overall cumulative effect of the motor vehicle tax on all the residents of Groton is a decrease. Is that safe to assume that? Meaning even if we enact this, if we don't enact this, the overall motor vehicle is going to be well over $700,000 of lost revenue. So residents, yes, will have a, of a decreased taxes per their car. This correction takes a little bit of that back, but still overall, the town's still losing a significant amount of money in motor vehicle tax, which means cumulative, people are going to be spending less on their motor tax than the bill they got last year.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think, I, I don't, I don't see, I'm in, I'm in favor of it because I think it's, cumulatively, people are still going to be paying less tax than they paid last year. It's just, it's not going to be as severe as what was put forth, which obviously they thought was an error because they, they're doing something to correct it. So I'm in favor of that. I think it's a, looking at the greater good of all of Groton and not individual, uh, vehicle owners. Thank you.
Counselor Gaiasky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, for a follow-up question. If we were to pass the 2025, uh, the, the box on the right, that number that is going to change to 2012 assessment new depreciation percentage, right? Because you're going to review the car. So theoretically, that's the value of it at this year at 90% for everybody's cars. But this year, it's going to go down, it's, the value, the valuation is going to change because it's, it was counted for last year, not this year, correct?
Are you comparing the new depreciation assessment to last year's assessment? To the 23?
So basically, this number all the right here in this, but this should be 2025, correct?
No, for me, it's 2024. It's my 2024 grand list. So I speak in terms of grand list. It's the 2025 tax bill.
Hold on, let me, so this, this year, this is 2023's assessment. This is 2023 grand list taxes. This is 2024 assessment grand list taxes. This is 2024 grand list tax. Why is this 2024 assessment that? Shouldn't it be 2025 assessment?
No, because we're opening up the 2024 grand list. The legislature allowed towns to reopen the grand list that they'd already certified to, to apply a different depreciation schedule.
There's a, Mayor. There, there's always a lag. So when you have the 23 grand list, that's what was used for your July of '24 taxes. So moving into the 24 grand list, October '24, that's what's used to set your July '25 taxes. And these are just two options. If you do nothing against this, you're just swapping them. So these are the same year, it's just two options. So this is July '24, July '25.
Okay, now I understand it. Thank you. Oh wait, I saw, um, just, I'm going to reiterate my point that I'm going to vote this in favor out of committee so we can have further discussion at the council and then it doesn't get put off for another year and we can take a week to think about it. So, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, and also, if we keep it the way it is right now and the assessments are on average lower than what they would be in the final right-hand column, it just, like as was said, it would place the burden further on personal property taxes and real estate taxes. That's where you would, they would take more of a burden then. Because you're collecting less in taxes here, so you would have to collect more in taxes from them. So just very quickly, my Audi that you all see me driving around in, my white car, is a 2006. And I'm very excited that I will also be getting a $500 value soon. Very excited about this. And I want to keep this car forever because I absolutely love it, so. All right, seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote on whether we want to bring this forward and continue with this. Let me grab my paper. We'll take a vote on 2025-310, New Motor Vehicle Depreciation Schedule. Uh, motion on the floor is for a recommended restoration, resolution adopting the new modified motor vehicle depreciation schedule for the 2024 grand list. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 Abstentions? All right, that passes five to three to zero. Thank you. And where did President Carter live?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor? Can, you, you didn't say who the noes were.
Okay, so, um, the noes were Parker, Pacino, and Bordelain.
He lived in the city. It was in the Shenacott, Shenacott Parkway neighborhood. So we'll look back, I don't know if he bought the house. If he did, we can find him on the grand list, but I think Jim Streeter would know.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
That would be a nice little project. If we could find the original on that one, that would be neat. We could, should hang that up somewhere.
I think someone said it might have been torn down.
Thank you. Thank you, have a good night. All right, so let's take a little recess here. It is 8:01. Um, we'll take about 10, 15 minutes.
Okay, it's eight twenty-two. We're back from recess. But we do have a quorum, so we will continue. Up next, let's see, two zero two five dash three oh nine Audit Services Two-Year Extension Option. This is in our packet on page twenty-one. Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item two zero two five dash three oh nine Audit Services Two-Year Extension Option. Motion to recommend a resolution to exercise the two-year option to extend the audit contract with the auditing firm of Clinton, Larson, Allen, LLP, CLA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. By Rusk, second by Pacino. Okay, would you like to give us a synopsis?
Sure. So, our current contract with the auditors expired with our most recent audit that was completed as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. The approval that the council had previously made was for a three-year period with the option for the two-year extension, so this is where we're at now with this two-year timeframe. So, with this, if approved, it would cover the fiscal twenty-five and the fiscal twenty-six audits. The auditors are in agreement. They've given us preliminary numbers for what they feel our fees would be. And if everyone is in agreement with it, then we could go forward with signing a contract with them for those two audit periods.
All right, I'm not seeing any hands. Guess we'll take a vote on two zero two five dash three oh nine Audit Services Two-Year Extension Option. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes seven to zero to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, eight to zero to zero. Thank you. Up next, two zero two five dash one seven nine dash one Setting the Shana Cossitt Golf Course Two-Thousand Twenty-Five Rates. Counselor Pacino, would you like to take that one? That's on page twenty-two of our packet.
I have it. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Item two thousand twenty-five dash one seven nine Setting Shana Cossitt Golf Course Two-Thousand Twenty-Five Rates. Motion to recommend the resolution approving the revised proposed two thousand twenty-five golf course rates.
Second. Moved by Pacino, second by Rusk. We're really slow on our seconds tonight.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
It was seconded by Rusk.
Thank you.
Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a synopsis on what you have for us to this evening?
Sure. Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Just a brief recap, I was here a few weeks ago, presented what the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission had proposed for rates. The council provided some direction and requested that the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission go back and look at the proposed rates, given the guidance that the council had presented. So, they have subsequently done that. And in summary, the resident senior pass rates increased seven percent, the non-resident rates increased fifteen percent, resident green fees increased in a range from seven to ten percent. And the non, with the exception of the League Nine hole and the non-resident greens fees, the rates increased variously to offset the adjustment to the resident rates. Happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you for your work on revising these rates. It's appreciated. I still have some concerns. I have four concerns with this. The weekend eighteen-hole resident rate is going up eight percent. The nine-hole resident rate is going up eight percent. The eighteen-hole weekday resident rate is going up eight point eight percent. And the weekday nine-hole resident is going up twenty-two percent. I would like to put a motion on the floor to decrease these for the eighteen-hole weekend resident rate to be fifty-two dollars, which represents a three percent increase. The nine-hole resident rate to be twenty-six dollars, which represents a four percent increase. The weekday eighteen-hole to be forty-seven dollars, which is a four point four percent increase. And the nine-hole weekday rate to be twenty-six dollars.
What was, can you repeat the last one? The nine-hole, was it?
The nine-hole, twenty-six, which is the same as the regular.
Point of information.
And my reasoning is.
You need a second.
Second for a discussion?
Point of information. I'm sorry, I missed the eighteen-hole.
Eighteen-hole weekend?
Weekend. Or weekday?
Fifty-two dollars.
I'm sorry, weekday.
Weekday, eighteen-hole, forty-seven.
Thank you.
And it's not material dollars. It's more just that I think to go up eight percent in one lump sum is too substantial for our residents. I appreciate the work done on the non-residents to increase them, but I think a three or four percent increase every year is the way we should go about increasing our overall membership fees. And I think this, again, does not make material dollars to the overall. It's only a dollar or two, but I think it's easier on the residents to have a three to four percent increase. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat those four rates again?
Yes.
Sorry.
Weekend, eighteen-hole, from fifty-four to fifty-two.
Okay.
Weekend, nine-hole, from twenty-seven to twenty-six. Weekday, eighteen-hole, from forty-eight to forty-seven. And the nine-hole from twenty-seven to twenty-six. No, just the nine-hole, not the nine, not the league. And just as an additional thought, if people, councillors don't necessarily agree with this, I do think there's potential where the tournament rates, the weekend and the weekday rates at eighty-five and seventy-five, those are, in my opinion, less than some of the comparable areas. So, if the council desired, I would be in favor of supporting an increase to the tournament fees because they take up a lot of time, there's a lot of planning, they're usually for charitable events, and those people tend to get, let's say, tax credits from the donations they provide for those tournaments. So, I think there could be an increase on those rates, but I thought those four were the top priority for me. Thank you.
Counsel, so we have an amended motion on the floor, made by McBride, signed by Borderline, to amend these rates. Counsel Parker.
Sorry, I don't have my question ready. I didn't mean to hit that.
Okay. Counsel Rusk, point of information, do you want to focus specifically on just these, this change, or do you want to bring up all concerns now?
The amended motion is for the changes, but it would also include the whole package deal. Okay. So, thank you, Director Berry, for bringing all of this to us. The one thing that I've had somebody reach out to me specifically about is that previously the associate rate was up through twenty-one. Is that correct?
Well, there was actually two. There was an associate and an associate plus.
Okay, and those were?
Let's see, the, I think the associate was nineteen to, oh, wait a minute. Oh, it doesn't have, sorry, it doesn't have the age distribution for the associate. So, there was an associate and an associate plus. My recollection is that the associate was from nineteen, I think, to thirty, and then the associate plus was thirty to thirty-five.
So, I'm going to dig through my pack, or my bag, just to try to find my old packet. So, my concern is that we-- is really the nineteen to twenty-one-year-olds, in that those are students often. They're often people who are either still in college or they are just starting out jobs. I had a constituent specifically reach out to me regarding that because the concern was the significant jump there. So, I'm trying very quickly to find my notes because I did have it, and unfortunately it closed. And I might have to do-- oh, here we go. So, associates were nineteen to twenty-five, and I don't have a two thousand twenty-four rate. That's your new one. Sorry, my apologies.
I do have the twenty-fourth page up if you want me to--
That'd be great. Thank you.
Associate from the twenty-four application for the golf course is twenty-two to twenty-nine. Associate plus is thirty to thirty-five. Youth is twenty-one and under.
Twenty-one and under. So, I'm going to propose that youth stay at twenty-one and under, and then associate be twenty-two to twenty-five.
I would second that motion.
You're making amended motion?
Amended motion.
Second. All right, we have an amended motion to-- this is on top of Counsel McBride's motion to amend the associate rate to-- and you're-- what were you saying? What number?
Youth, twenty-one and under, and associates twenty-two to twenty-five.
What do you mean, twenty-two to twenty-five?
I'm sorry, age. So, if you look on-- sorry, this is--
All right, so it'll be nineteen to twenty-one would be an associate, not to twenty-five?
No. Youth would be twenty-one and under.
Okay. Twenty-one and under, yep.
And then youth-- I'm sorry, then associate would be twenty-two to twenty-- oh, no, youth currently is eighteen and under, or is it under eighteen?
Well, it says the youth is eighteen and under.
Eighteen and under.
And now you're changing it from twenty-one to under.
To twenty-one and under. And then associate is twenty-two to twenty-five.
And you're changing the resident rate on the associate from thirty-two to twenty-two. Is that what you're saying?
I didn't change any.
Just the ages.
Nope, just the ages.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Counsel Merit.
I think we should ask what impact this would, this change would have on what you've come up with.
Yeah, I honestly, I can't tell you the number of eighteen-hole players we had last year. So, that's-- there's going to be a decrease in the revenue, but I couldn't tell you exactly how much.
Counsel Boarder.
Thank you, Counsel Rusk. I also received a communication, a couple calls regarding that as well. I think it's, you know, youth, to me, are twenty-one and older, especially if they're college students still living at home and, you know, kind of-- I know I see my nineteen-year-old's bank account, he couldn't afford much right now up at college. Actually, he just called for some laundry money. So, you know, they don't really have a lot. And then when they come home for the summer, they work for a very short amount of weeks, and that's all they have for cash. So, if they want to do a trip or any recreation or do something like this to be involved in their local golf course, I don't want to box out a nineteen or twenty-year-old college student or non-college student. So, let's just say they're not a college student, and, you know, they are pursuing a career path financially, you know, or look at those car taxes and everything else they've got to start paying, right? You know, independence is tough, but I think this is a great positive thing. And one of the things I hear in the community is what do we have for our youth to do? And there's not a lot. There's not a lot of places under twenty-one to go. And this is an option. And so, I think that's great. Eighteen to twenty-one, right, which really capsulates that college age or pre-college or person just recently graduated stepping off into their own realms of sorts or trades and then making that associate, a true associate age, moving that to twenty-two through twenty-five. So, that to me is very important. My other question is, if there are youth and they're military, can they show up with their military ID and fall under that? Or is that military rate only for an adult military person? Because I think there are youth that are active duty and are military dependents. That's my question.
Yeah, we-- There is not a separate rate for a youth military. We found last year that there was no military that played at the golf course at all, probably because they have a golf course on the base and their schedule just doesn't allow them to get over there.
Right. Or one could say that we could start to market a little bit more to really kind of try to bring in those people and those revenues. So, but for now, that's a whole nother thing. So, for now, I support this. I think that's a great middle road option, and that youth rate would encompass a lot of people. So, that's where I'm going to go for now. But I thank you.
Counsel Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to Director Berry, what's the age range of ranger in unlimited season passes?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
What's the age range in ranger for unlimited?
Most of the rangers are adults. They're working out on the course to keep up the pace of play. So, there really isn't a, you know, I mean, you could have a nineteen-year-old ranger. Most of our rangers currently are-- most of them are retired because they're available during the week to pick up different time slots to kind of keep the flow of the golf course going. So, there is no age range for rangers. Was that your question?
No, but you went into way more detail than I expected.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
So, basically, what is a ranger?
A ranger is somebody that works on the course to ensure that the pace of play is continuous. Tea times are set up for every eight or nine minutes, and in order for that to operate smoothly, you need somebody out on the course to make sure that a foursome is not backing up all the other foursomes behind them. So, that's primarily their role. They also monitor behavior, make sure that their, the foursome or the players are following the golf course rules.
So, basically, they work for their golf course and get to play golf at a discounted rate?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me start with, I very much appreciate to see the senior citizen in the military pricing, although the military pricing is, I got to tell you, it's not quite necessary. Most military folks just want what has been promised to them over the years. We don't need ten percent here, five percent there. It's nice, and we appreciate it, and we like it, but it's not necessary. With that said, let me go back to the youth. Youth in my mind is eighteen and under. It sucks getting old. You have responsibilities, and you have to make choices. And if you have to work an extra hour to afford the extra twelve dollars, then I guess you work another hour. I mean, it's just, it's just growing up. So, I'm not in favor of the youth and associate numbers changing.
Point of information.
Your question?
Actually, it's not a question. It's a statement. I'll take my second. I just want to clarify. My concern is not with the youth and associate green fees. My concern is with the fact that youth who had been paying three hundred and forty-five dollars this last year are now expected to pay one thousand thirty dollars for people who are nineteen years old. So, that is my bigger concern than--
Can you repeat those numbers?
So, the youth fee last year went up to age twenty-one. They paid three hundred and forty-five dollars for a season pass. This year, youth eighteen and under are paying three hundred and seventy dollars. The associate fee went from, or associate age went from over twenty-one and older to nineteen now. So, when you are looking at a nineteen-year-old, they were paying three hundred and forty-five dollars last year and now are expected to pay one thousand thirty dollars. That is my concern, not so much the green fees of it going up from-- sorry, I'm trying to find it-- from twenty dollars to thirty-two dollars. My big concern is allowing youth between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one, who are likely our college students or just starting out in the world, that they can still golf over the summer at three hundred and seventy dollars, which is the increase rate for youth versus one thousand thirty dollars. Because really, that's a timeframe where you just don't have a lot of money, whether you're in college or whether you're just starting out. So, I-- that's my rationale behind making youth twenty-one and under. And I'll yield my time.
Counsel Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I am in agreement with Counsel Rusk regarding that. I had a few people contact me about it. And my question through you, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Berry or Mr. Morrison, what is the rationale by changing the age and increasing the fee that I--
Well, the change in fee only occurred because of the changes in age. So, because we were-- because there was a proposal to change the age, that ended up moving the players into a different bracket. That was the only-- I mean, we didn't say, oh, we're going to increase, you know, the youth fees from three, three forty-five to one thousand thirty. I mean, that's not what we proposed. But that occurred because of the changes, the proposed changes in age.
Who proposed the changes in age?
That came from both the Golf Advisory Board and was supported by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay. My two cents is to change that to the suggestion of what Counsel Rusk said because that is a steep price. They were paying a different price, and last year we approved the numbers for a certain age. And we'd like to be consistent and get more players out because I foresee not many people coming out to play in that age range. That's all. And the other changes, thank you, Counsel McBride. I'm in agreement with all the changes you've suggested. Thank you.
Counsel Boarder.
Yeah, I just, you know, looking at the season passes where you could have a person who last year was eighteen, now turned nineteen, and now they went from three forty-five to-- I'm sorry, yeah, three forty-five to one thousand and thirty dollars from one year to the next with this change. It would really affect those kids that are nineteen and twenty. They're really getting hit. So, you know, again, you know, if you follow the model, not every kid goes to college, but, you know, truly a dependent, a student that's a full-time college student is a full dependent until they usually graduate college, and that's usually about twenty-one. So, that is a lot. I just think, I can appreciate Counsel Pacino's thoughts on the hole fees. That's really not much different, but that's where it would really impact. You know, that's almost went up double the amount just by the age change. So, a little more than double. So, yeah, I think those-- and we did have people reach out to us about that. So, just changing that age bracket number doesn't change the projected numbers. Folks that reached out to me said they're okay with a little bit of a raise. They respect that they have to have an increase, but it would affect those kids that have been playing that, that's a steep amount for them to come up with. So, that, I think, that age number change does help that process. So, twenty-one and below, and then twenty-two to twenty-five. So, thank you.
Counsel Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Counselor Rusk, for explaining what you were initiating. You're talking about what the season passes. With that said, how many golfers are we talking about that this is going to affect between the youth and the associate ages?
Last year, I think we had close to fifty associate golfers.
So, with that said, can we grandfather any golfer that was, that falls into this category, that golfed last year and the year before, just grandfather them until they're, they reach that twenty-two-year-old or twenty-one-year-old range? So, they can still pay the three forty-five and--
Well, sorry.
I mean, is that possible? Just grandfather the current golfers?
Well, I think with the proposed change, that would take care, there wouldn't need to be any grandfathering because those that are twenty and twenty-one and nineteen would still be paying, well, they'd be paying the new rate, which is either three seventy or four thirty. So, they wouldn't, just by the fact that we've changed the definition of a youth and the definition of an associate, they are grandfathered. Does that make sense to the council? Okay.
Can we do that with just the season passes? Or should we do that with just the season passes? Or is that--
Well, I think it gets a little tricky when, if you're considered a youth for a season's pass, but you're not considered a youth for a green fee. I think if we're going to make that change, we need to make that change across the board. I don't want to, I think it just complicates things if, if you're a season's pass holder and you're defined as an associate for, as a season's pass holder, but you're not defined as an associate for--
Understood.
--a green fee. I think it just would make things really complicated and, you know--
I hear you.
Yeah.
With that said, if we make the change that Counsel Rusk was suggesting, is that going to put a crimp on your finances? Will you be able to make it work?
You know, that's a great question, and I can't answer that because I don't know. You know, we've proposed a lot of changes and have built in what we think is going to be an attrition rate or attrition percentage. Normally, it's about ten percent, and I'm talking season pass holders. When we calculated the amounts for the, to put into the budget for next year, we figured a fifteen percent attrition. But since that time, the rates have been, have been cut back or reduced. So we'll, I'll be able to better answer that question in August after we've had a couple of months, well, once, after we see what, what the registration is for season pass holders. Because we've held off season passes, sales of season passes through the early part of the season. We're waiting for the rates to be set, and then we'll release them. And then people will be able to start signing up. So
Okay.
We'll be able to, and a majority of the registrations take place, you know, April, May, and June. We still have people that sign up in July and August, but the majority of them occur over the spring months. And so we'll have a better idea. And I'm just talking season pass holders. Then when we get into greens fees, you know, hopefully some of the changes that we've made will address the, will compensate for the changes in the resident rates. Because the non-resident rates are going up more than the, than the resident rates. So hopefully, you know, it's all going to work out. But I, it's too early for me to tell.
All right. So we're going to track them through 2025.
Oh, absolutely.
Track them, and then next year, you'll come back to us again?
Yes.
Let us know how this worked out. So I think I'd be in favor, now, I would be in favor of Counselor Russ's motion. And I will yield my time.
Point of information. Your question? I just want to make sure that these numbers are correct. The 18-hole and nine-hole numbers for non-residents did not change. I want to make sure those are correct. And if I can ask the rationale behind it.
Why did the weekday 18-hole and nine-hole not change?
For non-residents.
For non-residents.
So weekday?
Greens fees.
The non-residents are 55 each day. For 55 for non-resident, and then the updated version still says 55.
Right. Yeah, that was not part of the proposal from the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Rec Commission. I think they felt like the $55 was competitive with what we were seeing with other similar golf courses.
Okay. Do I have your answer? All right. So what first we're going to do is we will, how this is going to work, we have two amendments on the floor and the original motion. So we will vote on the second amendment that was proposed by Counselor Russ, which is to change the youth age up to 21 and the associate age from 22 to 25.
Point of information.
Your question?
If it's possible, wouldn't it be easier just to make it all one amendment if Counselor Russ is in agreement with Counselor?
No.
Okay. Just be one motion.
You can't. So once we vote on this, we will go back down to the first amended motion. We can continue talking if you would like to. And then we can go down to the main motion. So the second amended motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Counselor Parker, you said aye, correct?
Aye for the first part. Yes.
All right. Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero to zero. The amended motion one is now on the floor.
I'd like to make amended motion.
Your amendment?
I'm in agreement with Counselor Russ. Counselor McBride, we already voted for it. But I would like to increase the greens fees for the 18-hole by, sorry, let me calculate that because everybody else went up by 7%.
So are you talking the non-resident?
The non-resident to $58. $59, I apologize, $59.
So 48 plus 15% would be 55?
Oh, it's 15. I thought, I'm sorry. That's supposed to be 15, isn't it?
It would be 55.2, correct? The 19-hole, if you had $48, which is the amount for residents, and then we add 15% to that
Right.
Would be $55 and 20 cents.
Yeah. We'd like to keep out the change if we could.
Have it consistent.
Yeah. We don't want to be charging people $55 and 20 cents.
Right. So rounded. So the 55 is actually 15% over
Right.
The $48.
But, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
It increased from 45 to $48. So I'm trying to increase that change. So I do want to add some money to that. So if we're increasing, if we're not going to increase it by the $3 or $4, that's not fair for the ones that are residents, that theirs increased and the non-resident did not increase. Everywhere else, everybody's increased.
Do we have a, so you are moving, what number are you moving?
I want it to be $59.
And then, is that it? Or is there?
Everything else is fine. I'm agreeing. Yes.
Point of information.
Hold on one moment, please. 18-hole, non-resident.
Weekday.
59 weekday. I'll second for discussion. Moved by Parker. You have to have a second. Seconded by Russ.
Point on the floor before that, about her question. If I may go back, parliamentary, I had a question about her motion before we voted or seconded it, just to clarify.
Your question?
My understanding is if you look at the numbers, they all end in five and zeros. I think they were trying not to have random ones and zeros because it's harder to track. But I, is that, I guess that's my question to the Parks and Rec.
Yeah, we do.
It's 59. It's even. It's an even number.
I didn't say it wasn't even. If you look at the numbers, they all end in five and zeros. So they were trying to increase them, to track them. And what I heard in the meeting when I was there, I don't have voting powers, is that they were trying to keep it because the guy at the pro shop said when it's like off by like a dollar or something like that, it's harder to track number-wise. I could be wrong, but Mr. Berry may be able to speak to that.
But I will say that all the resident rates don't end in five or zeros.
I just remember hearing that. I was just bringing it out. But that's fine with me. I'm fine with 59. That's all.
Thank you. All right. We have an amended motion on the floor, moved by Parker, seconded by Russ. Counselor McBride?
Just a point of discussion for Counselor Parker. If you were looking to amend the 18-hole, were you considering the same for the 19-hole?
Oh, did I miss?
What did I say? 19-hole?
I like the 19-hole.
We all like 19-hole. Sorry. I'm sorry. Just.
Counselor McBride.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering.
I'm just trying to be consistent. May I speak to my motion?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. I'm trying to be consistent. We increased all these, all the others sections, but we're not going to increase one group. I don't find that equitable. So if we're going to do one, we're going to do them all.
No, I completely.
We need to be consistent.
Counselor Parker has that one.
So, and I believe you just said there was another one I missed?
Yeah, I was just, I agree with, I'm in support of your, your motion or your amendment. But you covered the 18-hole, and all the other items we've changed have been the 18-hole and the nine-hole. So I wasn't sure with your methodology, as Counselor Russ mentioned earlier, that nine-hole goes from 35 to 35. So I didn't know if you wanted to amend that.
I do. I will rescind my motion and those other, you're correct. Thank you.
I'll rescind my second.
Make a new motion that the 18-hole and the nine-hole for the weekday be increased by the 15%, correct?
The 59 was 7.2%. So if you wanted to do similar, that would go to 37 from 35.
Point of information.
Thank you, Counselor McBride. Counselor McBride said.
What are you saying it's going to?
Counselor McBride, say the numbers for me.
37 to 35.
35 to 37.
I'm sorry, 35 to 37.
And that's what?
The nine, nine-hole weekday.
27.
My rationale is to be consistent with all, all the increases. Because we've increased weekends. We didn't increase the weekday. And I know they want to be consistent, but we did it for the residents. And I'm repeating myself because I want to be clear that we increase in some areas, except for the youth, that we increased everywhere else. So we need to be consistent on raising it for the other side.
I'll second her motion.
Okay. So I have an amended motion.
Can I speak, please?
I have an amended, just a moment, please. I have an amended motion on the floor for an 18-hole non-resident at $59 a weekday, and the nine-hole non-resident weekday at 37. And it was moved by Parker, seconded by Russ. And we have with us Mr. Morrison who would like to speak.
I would. Thank you. I just want to point out that the rate proposal that was sent to you tonight, the Golf Advisory Board was not happy with the percentage rate increase for the residents for greens fees. So on the right is a column in red numbers that was created to promote a 7% increase for residents. Because that is what the council wanted for the season passes and the greens fees. So all these numbers that we're switching right now, like the one that just happened, from 27, I think the nine-hole non-resident was 30, now it's 27. A 15% increase doesn't even get that back to the 35 that was originally presented.
No, that, that number, the 35 was moved to 37. And the 18-hole non-resident was moved from 55 to 59?
Nine-hole I'm talking about.
That was moved from 35 to 37?
Right now, non-resident's 35. So the resident was moved from 30 to 27 to get it to a 7% increase. Now, if you take a 15% increase off of that 27, it doesn't even get you back to the 35. You're lowering the rate, even though you want to say that you're increasing the rate. You want to be consistent is what I'm talking about. Like, we're not being consistent. Every single line item is a different percentage.
Understood.
Madam Mayor?
Continue. Counselor Parker?
Oh, I could, is it, I'm sorry. So the non-resident, did you, my question to Mr. Morrison then, did you increase it to the percentage that we asked for? So we increased the not, the resident, but we didn't increase the non-resident?
The initial discussion was about season passes. So the first go-around, we didn't even talk about the greens fees. So the greens fees proposal pretty much stayed the same. And then when we went back to the Golf Advisory Board, they wanted no more than a 7% increase for the residents. So that's why that red column came up for the residents, and that was proposed tonight.
Okay. I'm still not, I see where they're coming from. But we did ask, since you presented to us a few weeks ago, these increases. And the increases were a hard hit on the residents. In order to match everything, which is what we said, I thought that was the, my understanding was that we were trying to make it one for one side and one for the other side, if we were going to increase anything at all. So if that's not the case, then maybe we should go back to the drawing board and make sure we have the right information then.
So the Golf Advisory Board presented to the Parks and Rec Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission took the resident rate down, which was no more than a 7% increase off of what we had last year, which is what you asked. So those are the numbers in red on the right.
Counselor Parker, do you have anything else you would like to share?
Okay. Again, we increased one side, but we're not increasing the other. So we're basically given a discount, just keeping them flat for the non-resident. But we're going to increase the residents. I don't find that equitable. I see, foresee, how many people, non-resident, come and play?
It's about a 50-50 split.
So what the, lack for a better term, the burden's going to be on the residents. And aren't we trying to increase membership throughout the town of residents attending? So we're going to increase their prices and not the non-resident? All right. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor McBride, did you have anything else you would like to, thank you?
All right. I'm going to take a turn here. If I'm looking at the 18-hole, what is in the 2024, and it was residents were 45 and non-residents are $55, that's a $10 difference. And if you divide that into 45, that is, so the non-residents pay 22% more currently than the non-residents. I'm in residents.
Are you doing weekday or weekend? I just want to make sure I'm in the right chart.
I'm in weekday.
Weekday. Thank you.
If you look at the nine-hole for weekday, the difference is $10, and non-residents are paying 40% more than residents currently, what was current. So I understand what Counselor Parker is trying to say. She's trying to say, keep increasing the non-residents. But I think in the red section, where we said go up 7% for residents, and then 15% on top of that for non-residents, is consistent all the way through the whole sheet. So in future years, if they want to increase rates and they want to go by the same kind of process, they would do the same thing. Otherwise, we would have two items that are different numbers as a percentage. I don't want to really speak to the amendment one on the floor right now. But I'm going to say that going forward now, I am good with the original motion now, that we made the amendment to the ages. And I think it is, would be appropriate to go with the numbers that are on, that were suggested to us in the red. And that is what we requested, and that is what they have brought forward. I'm also noticing that the cart fees are staying the same. And that is also what our community, I mean, some of the residents had come and asked for. So at this time, I think the numbers in red are good. And if we start changing even resident rates down from 7% down to three or to four, I mean, it just, it's not staying, as they are saying, very consistent. And we're making a lot of micromanagement changes here. And I think they have brought this to us as to what we had asked for. So I'm going to go with what's in red on the original motion. And so amendment two, I will be no, and probably the same on amendment one.
Thank you.
And actually, just to let you know, the people that saw and heard our conversation here, the ones that have reached out to me, have said they are good with these changes. They expected increases, and they said they were good with the changes that they saw, and they were thankful. So.
Counselor Russ?
Can I ask just one clarifier? The nine-hole league for, so, so if you look at the resident fee, it went up about 7% across the board. The nine-hole fee is up 23.5% from $22 to $27. Can you just explain, that's just a bigger jump?
Sure. So going back to 2011, the greens fee for nine-hole league was 21. In 2020, it went up In two thousand and twenty, it went up to twenty-two dollars. So between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twenty-four, it changed five percent. So in hindsight, we should have been adjusting it right along. We're making that correction now because, you know, it's thirteen years and it's only gone up five percent.
So Counselor, I'm sorry, Mayor. The Mayor made an observation that kind of like this is an evening-out year. Is that an accurate assessment?
That was our original goal. We have, I would say, kind of stepped back from that a little bit. And, you know, what we originally, what was originally proposed was probably perhaps a little too robust. And, you know, we've pivoted and we'll have to see what the outcome is this year. You know, we're hopeful that it will be net positive. It's been that way for the last five or six years. So we'll, we'll have to see.
Okay. So I'm, I'm always about not penalizing taxpayers because they already pay the bulk of the fee for this and kind of giving them a break. But I do understand what Mayor Franco is, is saying in that, you know, we're being consistent with fifteen percent more. And so I'm okay with that. And I honestly have not heard people upset about the greens fees. I've heard a lot about carts and a lot about the youth rate. So I appreciate your adjusting this and I do support this. Thank you. Counselor Portland?
My first question, this is also going to the RTM after us or no?
No.
It doesn't have to go to the RTM?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure. I couldn't remember in my thick brain here which way it had to go. All right. I appreciate Counsel McBride's suggestions. I think as it was stated, the suggestions that I just think it starts to get weird. I think what we're looking at is there's been even uneven percent movements throughout the years. Some went up, some went down. I don't want to say uneven. So it's not why this one looks a little bit bigger than that one. I think when, my understanding, and I can't speak for that committee, but when I was there and watched, again, I don't have voting power, is that they did their best observation at looking at the other greens fees numbers and fees everywhere else and thought, okay, here's where they're increasing, let's kind of be in line. And then if we want to set the tone to increase residents and non-residents by a certain rate moving on forward, then that's, you know, were things that we could consider. So that's why there was some weird, because some were already increased in previous years by a larger amount. So you couldn't really move the other ones. That was my understanding. Again, so I, I can support, obviously, I've heard a lot about that youth rate being extended. So that was one of my things that I wanted to make sure. So I appreciate Counsel Russ for putting that on the floor before I got a chance to because I definitely wanted to entertain that idea. But for now, I probably will not go with Counsel McBride's amendments because I don't think, I think if we do that, it almost needs to go back. And, and like you said, you can't answer and I don't think there's enough time.
Yeah, we, we're, we are, I don't want to say so far into the season, but we cannot spend another month going over this. I mean, my goal tonight is to walk away with rates that we can set and publish and get season pass holders to start signing up and adjust the greens fees because, you know, on these nice days, the golf course is packed. And we're not charging twenty-twenty-five rates yet. Because we don't have them set. So going back is just, I mean, if the council says go back, we'll go back. But it just, you're putting us behind, way behind.
Absolutely, and I agree with that. So I think, you know, I think I'm fine with what was presented with the modest change to what is a youth. And I think a youth to me is under twenty-one. Now, you can be on your parents' medical insurance until, what, twenty-six now? So definitely, under twenty-one is still a youth in my opinion because they're not fully funding themselves. So I think we need to support that. It encourages play and extends the membership of folks with access. So that's my other thing. My only question I have is all of our other town youth programs and programs, folks can apply if they fall below the medium-income AMI requirement? So if a person had a family member and wanted to play golf and fell below that, they can apply and is there a rates, would these numbers adjust for them?
Yes, we, we have a a scholarship opportunity. So if somebody wanted to apply for that, that money would come out of the golf course. You know, right now, in the past few years, the council has contributed from tax fund, tax dollars to help support families to be able to afford programs. Because, well, unless the council made a decision to operate in that same way. Because the golf course is a special revenue fund, scholarship money would come out of the revenue that the golf course generated. But there is, there is an opportunity for scholarships, yes.
All right. So I guess some people had asked me that they didn't really see that advertised. They didn't realize that the golf thing would be a thing, you know, a thing that they could use like they've used. So if we could just make sure on the golf page in the program book that it does say if you have a youth or somebody that wants to play that falls below the, the income that they could apply. I just want to make sure that's somewhere. That's my only thing. Other than that?
Okay. I think we'll have to probably do that on the webpage because the brochure, the summer brochure is already at the graphic designers and, and I'm not sure that we'd be able to put it in at this point.
Well, I'm fine with that, maybe just for next year and just maybe put it on the website for now. So people know that golf is not an exclusive thing in Groton. It's a town rep program. And there's scholarships available out there, just like swimming, soccer in other camps and things that people.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, I just want to remind our council, we have probably been on this topic for about an hour. We are on item number four on our agenda. We have four more items to go and it is twenty after nine. So I would just like to ask counselors that be cognizant maybe of some of the things we're discussing here because we are taking a lot of time on some of these topics that, it's a lot of discussion here. Counsel Gajewski?
I'm a yes on both and a good idea, auto-pass.
Counsel McBride?
Thank you. I'll make it quick. I, I support the motions. I specifically support the motions because I don't support increasing the cost of the residents of eight, eight-point-one and eight-point-eight percent. And I certainly support Counselor Parker's motion because I can't even envision contemplating increasing resident rates and not increasing non-resident rates. So I'll be supporting both.
Okay. Not seeing any other hands. Let's take a vote on the second amendment that's on the floor, which is to increase the eighteen-hole non-resident weekdays to fifty-nine and the nine-hole non-resident weekday to thirty-seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions. That passes, I mean, that fails three to five to zero. We're down to our first amended motion, which was made by Counsel McBride. The amended motion was to change the nineteen-hole weekend to fifty-two dollars, the nine-hole weekend to twenty-six dollars, the eighteen-hole weekday to forty-seven and the nine-hole weekday to twenty-six, all for residents. All right, we'll take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions would be zero, so that fails three to five to zero. We now have the main motion on the floor. Wait a second, I'm turning pages, hold on. Is to, it's the motion on the floor for two-zero-two-five dash one-seventy-nine, setting Shenandoah golf course rates two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Madam Mayor? You forgot to add the amendment from Counsel Russ.
Thank you, with the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
McBride opposes.
No, Juliet Parker opposes.
Any abstentions? That passes six to two to zero. We now have to take a vote on it as a whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
McBride opposes.
Abstentions? That passes six to two to zero with Parker and McBride opposed.
I hope this better next week.
Moving on to the fair housing policy in our packet. Thank you, Mr. Berry. This is on page twenty-five of our packet. Counselor Merritt, would you like, did you want to skip today? Okay. Counselor Parker, would you like to take the fair rent, fair housing policy on page twenty-five?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to affirm the town's policy of promoting and assuring equal housing opportunity through the approval of this fair housing plan resolution and authorize as the town manager or his designated representative to respond to and assist any person who alleges to be the victim of illegal discriminatory housing practice in the town of Groton through the designated state, federal or local programs programs providing assistance in legal services and fair housing standards. I so move.
Second, Pacino.
Go by Parker, seconded by Russ.
Point of information? Point of information?
Your question?
Can we make those individual blocks for the slide bigger?
Yeah, we're working on it.
He's working on it.
Just checking. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. With me tonight is Corinne Piazza, our Economic and Community Development Manager. This is something that we do every year. We update and just reaffirm our fair housing policy. This is something that's required by federal law, by state law, looking at our eligibility with our community development block grant. And really just affirming that we support fair housing and, you know, federal and state law is supporting these. So again, Connecticut Department of Housing, Urban Development. We do this every year. Also, April is Fair Housing Month, so that's something that we just reaffirm through this. Again, this is something that we update every year. Standard language from both the feds and from the state. Happy to enter any questions on this.
Mr. Graham?
I won't say what it was, but I'm glad to see, if you recall, there was some antiquated language in previous years. It's good to see the government, federal government finally corrected that.
Okay. Counsel Portland?
Can you send me this slideshow?
Sure.
It'd be good to have it just because it's not in our packet. And if someone asked me a question about it, I just would like to have it on hand and refer to. So if you, and this is up on our website or?
This is just stuff taken from the referral, which is in your packet. It's just kind of putting a synopsis of it. But we can certainly email this slideshow to the manager after tonight's meeting.
Yeah, I think it's great because if someone had a question about what it is, I can just send them the slideshow. You know, it's nice to be able to reference it back. So I add those in different folders for, and then look for those changes and trends and things. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
And for me, this one's a no-brainer, so.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. Let's take a vote on two-zero, Counsel Parker didn't have her hand up, did she? Because I can't see her from here.
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to vote on two-zero-two-five dash two-nine-two, the fair housing policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I didn't, opposed? Abstentions? I didn't hear Counsel Parker. Counsel Parker, how did you vote? You're on mute. Counsel Parker, are you there? I can't hear you. You're on mute. All right, maybe she's having a problem with her system? Counsel Parker, it looks like you're off mute.
Yes, I've been trying to say, it froze on, I was saying something and it didn't pick up.
Okay. And your vote?
I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero to zero. Thank you. Up next, two-zero-two-five dash two-nine-three, the Groton Heights Property Preferred Project Concept Development Team Selection. Public hearing date, potential executive session. This is on page twenty-six of our packet. Mr. Reiner, will you be giving a presentation?
Yes, just trying to share screen here. Give us one second.
Do we have, is, there's a motion here. Should the motion be read? Mr. Burt, prior to us moving into the presentation, Mr. Burt?
Are you going to hit these in there or should this?
I think after we go through this and depending on that.
So let them first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
If you could just do the share screen. All right, so next slide. So again, I'm not going to go through all of this. We've discussed this a number of times. We just wanted to give kind of a very quick overview of the process, talk about why we've done this the way, and executive session. Next slide. You know, we started this in July twenty-three. Here we are in March of twenty-five. Again, number of meetings, PSRC process. We've done meetings and opened an executive session to get us to where we are today. Next slide, please. You've seen this process, just showing each of the phases of the town-wide policy and the process that we take and where we are currently in that. Kind of the last stages of that project selection stage. Next slide. Where we are, we had that PSRC process, the council picking the preferred developer. And then after this, we get into that contract negotiation stage. Next slide. And really going through the council steps, which tonight is kind of the last step of this process, which the council would select that preferred developer and concept team. Next slide. And again, you know, we've gone over this before, why we do part of this process in executive session. And I guess that would lead to kind of our, our next step. I don't know if the council wants to go into executive session on this or, you know, we met last week, last Tuesday, did interviews of the preferred, recommended developers from the PSRC. And I think it's, you know, now it's in the council's court to kind of look at next steps.
Mayor?
I don't believe it's necessary to go to executive session unless others feel necessary.
I'm not hearing anybody's, is there anybody that thinks that you need to go into executive session? Okay. So are we going to go into committee of the whole now?
Yeah, we're still in committee of the whole.
I mean, okay.
Yeah, we have to finish up.
Sorry about that. It's going, becoming a long night. So do we make them, are we putting a motion on the floor now? And are we going to put two names on the floor?
It's up to you how you want to fill in. We had the open-ended motion, but it's up to the council how they want to proceed. Did you want me to give a little background on the two finalists?
That would be great.
Okay. Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, or ECO, proposes to convert the existing school building into seventeen new affordable housing units of various sizes that will provide affordable housing at a range of income levels. The structure will be preserved and include sustainability upgrades. The community-style apartment building will fit in with the residential character of the neighborhood as well as provide additional recreational and support spaces for public use. Additionally, ECO proposes participating in the desired Additionally, ECO proposes participating in the desired land swap with the Build Memorial Library. This project will provide a much-needed housing at various income levels, remediation and preservation of the existing structure, recreational space, and is projected to be executed in a timely manner and return the property to a vibrant use that contributes to the town tax roll. And just to mention that generally speaking, whatever's whoever's successful tonight, we'll have more information on the website next week. E S Goodman proposes the adaptive reuse of the existing building and turning it into a small-scale rental office space to serve the demand of companies seeking modernized, size-appropriate commercial space within close proximity to local businesses such as Electric Boat. Additionally, the proposed project will have upgraded landscaping and does not require the land swap with the public, Build Memorial Public Library to take place. However, the development team is willing to deal with the land swap in partnership with the library. So just to make that clear, it's not required, but they're happy to do it. The project will address the required environmental remediation to preserve the existing building, add sustainability upgrades, and has relatively straightforward funding and implementation timeline to return the project to the tax rolls with a vibrant use that fits within the neighborhood. Basically residential versus commercial space.
Okay. I would suggest that the motion be brought to the floor with both businesses and then discussion can be had. And then a roll call vote would be had where councillors would state which company they would choose. So it puts both of them on the floor. And Councilor Gajewski, would you like to make the motion?
Point of information?
Your question?
Would it be appropriate also to state that the, wasn't there a talk of some other amenities on the property with the first one? Are you able to speak to that?
John, do you have any?
So the other amenities that they were proposing on the site?
Correct.
Let's see, there were.
Sorry. That was just basically a high-level overview. So really, the other piece, I guess, would just be that they, the gym will be repurposed.
No, the first one. The first developer.
Oh, for E S. Sorry, for ECO?
ECO was first.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were proposing to reuse the gymnasium area and repurpose that.
Oh, I guess I was. I guess they were also talking about the park as well. I thought that would be an important thing to tell the public.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Because that's a high-level thing that people were.
Can we put the motion on the floor now?
I am asking a question.
You don't have the floor.
I do have.
You had a quick question and it was.
I don't know where you're getting.
Can we put the motion on the floor, please?
Can I ask the question about the park though first? Can that be?
At this time, there is not a motion on the floor.
Motion to recommend a resolution selecting Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunity as the Preferred Project Concept slash Development Team instead of public hearing date for April 8th, 2025?
Can you repeat that? I.
Oh, sorry. Item two zero two five dash two nine three, Groton Heights Preferred Project Concept slash Development Team Selection and Public Hearing. Motion to recommend a resolution selecting Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunity as the Preferred Project Concept slash Development Team instead of public hearing date for April 8th, 2025?
You're not listing both companies.
Oh, I was going to do two separate motions. Should I do?
No, you have to do them together.
Okay.
And then we would select a roll call vote.
Sorry, my apologies for not understanding. All right. Motion to, third time's a charm. Motion to recommend a resolution selecting Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunity or E S Goodman as the Preferred Project Concept slash Development Team instead of public hearing date for April 8th, 2025?
Second.
Move by Gajewski. Second by Russ.
Point of information?
At this time, I'm going to, again, state publicly that I'm recusing myself from this process. I will run the meeting, but I will not participate in any of the discussions as per recusal rules. Thank you. Councilor Borderline, did you have something?
I just didn't know if in that overview that you guys are giving on both, I think the gym use to the public was a great thing to say. Also, ECO had stated about a park possibly being on there, if I remember correctly.
Council Borderline, you had mentioned earlier you might recuse yourself from this.
I was just asking about.
I know, but this is.
Council Borderline.
If you're going to recuse, now is the time.
I was just asking for the overview to be accurate on the amendment.
Still participating.
That's considered participating?
Yeah.
I said I would determine if I was.
If you're going to recuse, now is the timing.
Council Borderline, will you be recusing yourself from this?
I said I would determine if I was going to.
I'm asking now.
You need to note before going forward.
What it, so basically, I was told if I don't recuse, everything would have to go back to the drawing board. Is that correct?
It'd be up to the council, but should we discuss the?
Because that's what you told me.
Council Borderline?
Please don't yell at me.
I am not yelling at you by any means. And I think you're out of order.
Okay.
My question is, will you be recusing yourself?
My question is, I was told if I recused myself, that this would have to go back to the drawing board. I'd like that answered.
Have you recused yourself?
Yeah.
That's not what was said?
What did you say then?
No. If, without recusal, we're going to have to get the attorney involved and have further discussions and stop discussions for the night. That'd be my recommendation.
Oh, because what I was told on the drawing.
I will ask you one more time. Council Borderline, will you be recusing yourself?
I was just wanting to clarify what I was told if I recused my, if I don't recuse myself, everything would have to go back to the drawing.
That is not what was said.
That's, you weren't there, were you?
He has just said that.
I haven't.
My question is, will you be recusing yourself?
I just wanted that question answered, so now it's changing.
No, I will. Let me kind of answer that. Originally, that was, I mentioned, I've talked to the attorney multiple times that it may have to go, but then there's been further discussions with the attorney. And my recommendation changed, has changed that if, without the recusal, things get postponed until the, such time that the town attorney could come to an executive session with council to talk about options.
Okay, so you did say, thank you for clarifying that.
I did say that, yes.
Thank you for clarifying. That's all I wanted to know. So said no, and then now yes. Okay. I will recuse myself tonight because I don't want to slow down the process. I do have my concerns with the whole recusal. And, you know, also after watching the CHRO case with some of the testimony there.
Point of order. Your point of order. A recusal is a recusal.
I have a right to.
No, no. You don't have a right to talk on it anymore after you recuse yourself.
No, you don't. You, that's, no, I challenge that to the town manager. Absolutely, you can speak to your recusal.
The town manager does not have the.
Doesn't go to the town manager.
It goes to the council.
I'll challenge it. You can speak to your recusal. After you recuse yourself, you are allowed to explain to yourself why you're recusing.
Why you are.
Why are you recusing?
I'm recusing myself because of that CHRO case comments that I read after I watched it.
Point of order.
As well as the.
Point of order.
Your point of order.
The CHRO has nothing to do with Councilor Borderline.
Absolutely, I finalize our conflict.
Council Borderline, all right.
My recusal is my opinion.
You have recused yourself. You no longer have the floor.
Okay, so that's, thank you.
You no longer have the floor.
So that's my reason. Thank you.
I just think it's important to note, for touching on reasons, that I do believe that, that the process has been jeopardized by Council Borderline. That's part of why the attorney has recommended a recusal.
Yes. Point of order. Your point of order.
Council Borderline has recused herself. She needs to step away from the desk.
Council Borderline, you have recused yourself. You no longer have the floor and you should stop speaking because you are now out of order, and I have said it twice now. I'm going to, because I'm sure many people now are wondering what the situation is and what is going on here. I have recused myself from this situation, which I have stated very publicly, that false allegations have been brought against me stating that I had given a quid pro quo regarding this project. It is absolutely false, but I recuse myself not to taint the process. At a previous meeting, which I was not in attendance at, there are allegations that Council Borderline asked the, one of the developers if she could get a job with them.
Point of, point of order, that's not true. I asked clarifying questions about their process. So just like you're saying, yours is not true, that is not true, and I will not.
Council Borderline, you do not have the floor.
I won't be falsely represented. That's wrong.
You do not have the floor.
So speak factual since you weren't there.
You do not have the floor.
Point of order. Council Borderline does not have.
We're going to take a recess now because Council Borderline is out of order, and we're taking a recess because she has stopped the business of this council at 9:41.